To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, Council of Brooks is not here tonight, so I'll go ahead and take on the moment of silence for those who have lost their lives to COVID-19. Uh, as of last Friday, uh, there were four hundred thousand one hundred eighty-eight cases of COVID in the state of Oregon. And we were up to five thousand three hundred and eighty-one deaths. Uh, as of today, the Omicron variant is now in Oregon. It was identified here in Monoma County and Washington County. There were three cases reported today, so it made its way to Oregon. I just want to ask folks who haven't got vaccinated, please do so. Uh, those who are in need of a booster, go ahead and do that. Uh, last week I got my booster at the site at the Tektronix Campus in Beaverton. Uh, off of Murray Boulevard. It's super easy to get in and out of. It took me all of forty-five minutes to get in there and back into my car to get my shot done, my booster. Uh, and that's on the long side. If you get there, I asked them the best time to get there. Uh, if you're there between two and three, it's usually your in and out. You get your shot, you wait your fifteen minutes and you go home. Uh, it's a very large facility. There's a lot of folks giving shots. You move through that uh, area pretty quickly. So if you can't find an appointment. Uh, at your local pharmacy, your doctor, or at Fred Meyer like. This is a dropping clinic out in Beaverton. Uh, if you go to Washington County's website, they have the address of where it's at. Again, it's fairly easy to get to by car. Um, and I suggest you go, cause uh. We, we just can't keep having uh, folks pass away here in Oregon. Due to COVID. So with that, let's take a moment to remember those folks who have passed away since beginning of COVID. Thank you. Uh, that brings us to public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone to address the council regarding items that's not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. If there's anyone in the meeting who would like to address the council. This would be the appropriate time. Is there anyone at the Poll Center base?
No one at the Poll Center Mayor, uh, and I have not heard back from anyone in the Zoom meeting.
All right, give maybe a last minute uh, chance for those folks who would like to. Address the council during consensus and comment. Okay, seeing none, I'll move on to the consent agenda. Uh, the consent to those items considered routine, they will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council will like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. Tonight, the consent agenda consists of item number one. Consideration of approval of the work session in regular meeting minutes of November twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one. Item two, consideration of resolution number five-five-eight-six dash twenty-one. Warning, the contract for construction of the Tuolton Road Sweet Drive to Community Park Phase Two Project. Part of the Tuolton Moving Forward Bond Program. And finally, item number three, consideration of resolution number five-five-eight-seven dash twenty-one. Authorizing the city manager to execute an amendment. To an intergovernmental agreement with Clean Water Services for their Martinazzi sanitary sewer upsizing phase one project. Would anybody like any of the, one of these items pulled off consent tonight?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion and second to approve the consent agenda is ready and discussion on the motion. All right, uh, Council Pratt. Couldn't hear you. Council Sacco.
Aye.
Uh, Council Ritz. She might create from her camera, come back. Uh, Council President Grimes.
Aye.
Uh, Council Raz. Uh, I think that's still, we've got four votes that I think that cuts the mustard, Rick Sean. All right. All right. Next up is our special reports, uh. Equitable Housing Solutions Meeting, as a really rent burdened public meeting recap.
Yes, I believe our. Our her, our housing, um, senior analyst, Karen Profox will give that presentation.
Welcome, Karen.
Thank you so much. Uh, hold on one moment and I will share my screen. Everybody see that okay? Can everybody see that okay?
Yep, we can see it.
Okay. All right. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Karen Pearl Fox and I'm the Senior Housing Program Analyst for the City of Tuolton. It's a pleasure tonight to provide you with a special report on the Equitable Housing Solutions Event and Meeting. Which took place on November tenth, twenty-twenty-one. The event goals included identifying the causes and barriers to reducing severe rent burden. And solutions to severe rent burden. The event also introduced Tuolton's newly adopted housing production. Strategy to the public and identified the intersect between severe rent burden and potential solutions drawn. From the housing production strategy. In addition, the goals included meeting state requirements for both. House Bill four thousand and six requires cities greater than ten thousand in population. To hold a meeting to discuss and identify solutions to severe rent burden. Severe rent burden is the circumstance where a household spends more than fifty percent of its income on gross rent for housing. A severely rent burdened city is a city where at least twenty-five percent of the renter households in the city are severely rent burdened. Currently, Tuolton is a severely rent burdened city with twenty-five point three percent of its households severely rent burdened. A wide range of out outreach methods were utilized and an extensive invite list was compiled. With multiple email invite blasts sent out to residents and housing providers to effectively get the word out on this event. In addition, flyers were distributed to the Tuolton Pantry in both Spanish and English. And the Tuolton and Tuolton Life advertised the event in both Spanish and English as well. There were a variety of other methods which you can see on the left-hand column that we use and that that's just a short summary of those. As a result, sixty people registered for this event, including residents, housing service providers, housing developers and more. And registration considerably topped the past two years for this event. The program opened with a welcome and introduction to the Equitable Housing Solutions Event, along with polling. That was followed by the presentation introducing the housing production strategy. The cornerstone of this event was the moderated panel with six esteemed local panelists and equitable housing expertise. They looked at the intersect between the housing production strategy and potential solutions and reducing severe rent burden. I'd like to recognize the panelists who shared their expertise with us and gave of their time for this event. They included Rachel Duke, Executive Director for Community Partners for Affordable Housing. Mariana Valenzuela, Director of Community Partnerships for Centro Cultural. Catherine Gallion, Director of Housing Stability for Community Action. Jamie Trinkle, Attorney at the Oregon Law Center. Alex Devlin, Services Network Administrator at Washington County, who works with uh. Jess, who you heard from earlier on Supportive Housing Services. And Peg Malloy, Executive Director of the Portland. Housing Center whose focus is on affordable homeownership. The panel discussion was followed by an open Q and A with participants. And the event closed with ways to stay engaged and involved in the city's housing production strategy. As well as reducing severe rent burden. And we also discussed how to access uh, the city's housing resources page. This is the uh, summary of the poll, uh, which occurred at the, toward the beginning of the event. The question was, what brings you to this event and meeting today? And notably, in purple here, you can see that forty-three point five percent of respondents chose all of the above. Uh, one, two, three, four, and uh, it was the fourth one. And uh. That's notable because it indicated that the larger number of people that were attending. Uh, wanted to learn about reducing severe rent burden, the housing production strategy. And they were also interested specifically in being involved in helping to find equitable housing solutions for Tuolton. So these are a few of the. The big takeaways from the event. The event garnered strong positive interest from the public, council, housing agencies. Nonprofit developers, housing service providers and culturally specific organizations. The panelists were a wealth of knowledge on equitable housing. We were very lucky to have them all. It's important to continue to build relationships with housing partners, panelists, housing developers, housing service providers and others. To support equitable housing and reduce severe rent burden. Our next steps in twenty-twenty-two will be moving forward with a strategic equitable housing funding plan. Recently funded from the state, from Department of Land Conservation and Development. Uh, second bullet point is another uh, grant that we received uh, for housing capacity framework, which will be focused on. Housing production strategy goals ten through twelve for the creation of multifamily housing, including mixed use housing. And finally, we'll be moving forward with our, our first year of actually evaluating strategic actions in the housing production strategy. That are in the schedule for twenty-twenty-two. With that, I'd like to invite your questions. And any feedback you may have.
Questions for Karen. As our screen changes back. There we go. Karen, uh, Council President Grimes.
Hi, thank you. Um. It was really troubling to see that we have such a high percentage of severely um, rent burdened. Families or um, households in our community. And I'm wondering, how do we ascertain that information?
So that informa- well. I would, I would say, first of all, we ascertain to a certain degree that information from the Housing Needs Analysis originally. Um, there were certain slides that I included in the housing production uh, strategy. At this event that pointed to, to a couple of key factors. So one slide. Was about the various percentages of low-income folks. Um, all the way up to high income and what that looks like. And forty-six percent of our city, in fact, is. Either low income, very low income, or extremely low income. That's a very large percentage. Uh, fifteen percent were moderate income and thirty-nine percent were uh, high income. Uh, so that sort of started that platform, but the severely rent burden um. Number of twenty-five point three percent is actually determined by the state. I don't know their exact formula for doing that, uh, but we go, we have to go by their numbers. Uh, that's what puts us in the category of, oh, twenty-five percent are over.
Just to add, they use the um. The uh, American Community Service Data and it's a rolling five-year look of the last five years. For which, for the year in which they make the determination. And so as a result, for the past three years, Oregon has been in that cat, or excuse me, toll and has been in that category in Oregon.
Council Pratt.
I mean, unmute problems. Um, well, first Karen, I wanted to thank you, cause um. Uh, for your outreach. My, my big concern is that um. At this meeting, which is great, but we still had a very small percentage of people there that were saying that they were there. Because they were severely rent burdened and. Um, you had great speakers and at that meeting, I heard there are great resources out there. So like you going out to the food pantry. And handing out flyers where that part of our population might be was great, but um. I still have a concern about um, outreach to these people. I know some of them don't even have computers, so. Um, and we're such a society where everything's, you know, go to this website or that, you know, place, so. Um, I just wanna um, thank you for doing that and encourage you to continue um. Your outreach to that community as much as possible, so they can get the resources to help them.
Yeah, I, I would, I, I'm right on board with you with that. That, that was my question is what does it take? To get those that are most impacted to come to these events? What does it take? And I actually asked my panelists after, in a debrief, that very question. And what they said is you literally have to pay people. You have to pay people who are severely overwhelmed. With just dealing with it, if they're gonna have housing the next day, you cannot assume that they can make it to events. That literally, we need gift cards, we need, we need um, money to pay folks that are in that situation. According to what the panelists, they all. Um, that was a general consensus from the panelists. And we heard that from our culturally specific organization, as well as our affordable housing organization. So um, that's, I think that is what it takes. Um, it's not that you can pay everybody, but I'm just saying that. In order to expect people who don't have any time, who don't have the money to hold their housing together. There, to come to these events, we have to do something and, and that is what other communities are doing.
Well, that's interesting and it might be a way to help. Help support some of our small businesses in the future.
Other questions, comments? Well, following on uh, Council Pratt's question, you know, a lot of times back in the day. I always heard, you know, you go out to the community and it's, instead of them, you expecting them to come to you, you go out to them and have. Ice cream socials, having anything that's culturally acceptable to the group or where you're gonna have your event. That they'll come to you, uh, when it's easier for them to do. And there's, and then like you're saying, Karen, there's an enticement. So instead of having them come to a Zoom meeting, you know, pop-up events, they know throughout the city. In those areas, we know are severely rent burdened. To get the word out about assistance and making those connections, uh, that's probably another way. And probably having those gift cards and stuff like that there at the same time, you know, cause we gotta get. You know, more folks involved, let them know it's out there to help them. Cause this is gonna be a continuing need, as you, we all know, in Tuolton. You know, we've been in this category for quite a, you know, for a little bit. It's not, you know, news to us, but. Uh, you know, how do we, you know, fix this issue over with this? Plan we have coming in the future, how we can get more folks out of this situation is, you know, gonna be our primary focus for the next couple of years. Uh, of the council, cause this is one of our priorities.
Absolutely. Um, and just to keep in mind is. You know, with housing production strategy, we're going to continue to do engagement. So there will be opportunities through that process. And we can combine some discussion about housing production strategy and severe rent burden, just like we did in this event, but to do it in other events. It needs to be an ongoing process, literally not just once a year. But actually an ongoing engagement process. And we, we have not yet figured out exactly how to devote that time. And the other thing is that speaking directly with people, which is what you need to do, you need to build relationships. Is very labor intensive and you have to send, set aside staff time to do that. So, you know, we can't, we can't do it short shrift. It is labor intensive.
And it's tough to get, you know, like, we just had the, you know, COVID moment. To get, you know, a lot of folks is still very reluctant. I'm still reluctant to, you know, gathering large numbers. So you got the double whammy that you wanna get the message out. And you wanna talk to people in person, but they're very reluctant because of COVID and other issues, so.
Right.
It, it makes it, you make sure, it makes our job very, very difficult to get the word out. Council President Grimes.
Thank you. Um. I don't wanna make any assumptions at all, and I'm assuming that. Rent burdened households are probably everywhere in the city. Um, and in places we probably don't expect at all, off. In addition, but do, you know, do we have a way? And this goes to the outreach and, you know, making appropriate efforts. Do we have the ability to sort of. Figure out or know, or do we have information as to? Are there areas or pockets of these households? Where we could do, to Frank's point, a pop-up or something like this? I mean, do we have a way of sort of knowing where some of these? Rent burdened, I mean. Kind of finding.
It's, it's, um, I think there are some ways to do that. And obviously, um, the state has drawn on some formulas to doing that themselves. Uh, with regard to neighborhoods and we, we had a list that we, we developed with community members. Of the apartment buildings that we thought were on the lowest income side of things. And so we still have that list. Actually, we used it in some of our outreach with, um, our targeted outreach for rental assistance. But we haven't tested it, you know, we haven't, you know. Gone through a really detailed process of determining for ourselves where those neighborhoods are. And we know we have um, two qualified uh, tracks in Tuolton that are on the lower income side. And so I, I think we just need to dig down and come up with a process if we're interested in doing that to get closer, maybe mapping to some extent. Where, where folks live that are really the most impacted.
And I would even submit that it doesn't necessarily even need to be. You know, the lowest household income either. I mean, just to rent a house. Um, you know, in our community is extraordinarily expensive and for families trying to keep. Kids in the neighborhood or in the school district. I mean, it just, the costs are prohibitive, so. I just was curious how we would kind of go about finding that information so that we can get the help to the people. And the resources to the people. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much for your presentation. I'm curious, um. Kind of like on the same topic of areas, but mostly, you said we're at. Tw- twenty-five percent of our residents fall under that. Um, burden, um, rental. Am I, am I correct?
Correct.
Are we compared to other surrounding cities like, and I'm thinking more like Wilsonville. Um, Sherwood and Tiger. It, does it show any data on that?
Um, Tiger does also severely rent burdened city. I don't know, um. Uh, with regard to the other two cities that you mentioned, if they fall in that category or not. Um, that information, uh, we have a complete list from the state every single year as to which cities are severe rent burdened. And I have that information. I can provide it to you.
Yeah, I can. Curious, um. Cause you said they get this, these numbers from some kind of data that they do at the state level. I'm just curious to see where we are. Um, population-wise, we're about twenty-seven thousand people and twenty-five percent of that seems like a lot of. Lot of people in our community that are rent burdened. And I wonder if they also work within the community or, I guess, yeah, there's more work to do as far as. Finding out where are they and. Do they work here? Are we providing those jobs that can help them or are we? Or they're working somewhere else and then live, but live here because our jobs are not. Competitive enough. I'm just, yeah, just, the whole thing is a whole mystery to me, but. Because I, I'm curious more than ever, just knowing all those numbers. But thank you, Karen.
Yeah, I, I, I totally agree with you. And I, I hope we can dig deeper and, and be able to more direct. Our efforts toward those that are most impacted.
Right, that's, that's what I'm like, okay, is it in my areas, my neighbor, is it? I don't know, the other side of town or the north or the south, so I'm just. Curious, this is just really a pause that twenty-five percent out of twenty-seven are rent burdened. And I wonder if they, if they have jobs here and. We, we got a lot of work to do there. It's just, that's how I feel. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Other questions or comments? I just, I wanna pick up on a comment you made, Karen, that yes, it's gonna require a commitment. On our behalf, between the council and staff, uh, to stay on this. Uh, as I mentioned, this is a priority of affordable housing here in Tuolton, is a council priority. So this is one of the things we should be focusing on as you develop your plans and strategies and that, you know, for your work plan in the next year or so. On, you know, I, I know you've got the plan right now, uh, and monitoring it and see how, uh, what we need to tweak to make it more effective. And somehow, you know, decrease the burden of folks in town. Either by finding alternatives for housing or subsidies or just. Uh, somehow, you know, giving the people a break that they're not, you know. The majority of their income is not going to their housing and paying for it and decreasing that stress.
Great. And, and we are, I think all of you know. Know that we have a targeted outreach partnership with Community Action for. Uh, rental and utility assistance and that has been a very popular program. And people are calling in like crazy, honestly, right now. Uh, and, and that in part is happening because. The state's process is on hold right now because they were over, over prescribed and could not keep up with the timeframe to process. So while they went on hold, we got more people calling us. So and I, um. We're regularly getting calls and it's a very needed program and we are learning a lot. And there is overlap between that program and those that are severely rent burdened. It's not a one-for-one overlap, but there is probably a fair amount of overlap.
That's why this legislative session, that was emergency session that was called in to deal with this is super important. About getting that moratorium extended statewide, not city by city. And get additional dollars into that funding, that pot, so they can start getting those dollars back out. Cause like you said, Karen, yeah, they are pretty much tapped out at the state level. To get out this rental assistance. We, we don't want people evicted when, you know, the, cause of the programs running slow or the dollars turning out quicker than we thought. Um, once it's, we can't have people in the streets because of bureaucracy. We gotta figure it out. I'm, I'm encouraged that the. State took this up and they called the session and ideally, uh, they'll get the dollars in there, they get the extension. And the programs can continue to keep folks at home and work with landlords to get them paid and. Um, so everybody, you know, win, so win-win-win that you stay in your home, the landlord is whole and uh. We don't have additional people, you know, ended up homeless.
Great. I do wanna mention one thing is that we had a, a huge uh, increase in the number of housing service. Providers that attended this event. And I, I'm hopeful of, because of that and a whole range of service providers. Because they, they have direct connections with their clientele essentially. And so there is an indirect route there. So um, that's just one thing to keep in mind. That was a big positive that um. There is a lot of reaching out to us and help out there for us. Um, and we can circle back and make connections with them in order to reach those that are severely rent burdened. It's just a slightly indirect route, but we, we could do that.
Yeah, any channel that works, let's see, or multiple channels. Let's do it. I think Council President Grimes had her hand up.
Yeah, thanks. I'm just. These statistics are very troubling. Um, and I'm just, as I think through this, I just think of. Other areas, I mean, are we. Sharing some of this information, not only the forty-six percent. Of low-income homes plus the rent burdened homes. Are we sharing that information with TriMet when we ask for additional services? From them? Cause that seems like.
Pretty. I don't, yeah, I don't believe that has done, been done, that can be done. We could certainly do that.
So I think that helps make a pretty strong case for us. And especially when TriMet was, has been talking recently in the press about. Service decreases for the first time in a long time because they're having issues with um, staffing and drivers. And then the same thing when we were talking about tolling and all of the. Issues we have with tolling, um, and additional, um. You know, congestion in the city is, and, you know, increase um. Financial hardships on our residents. It seems like that's another thing we could take maybe to the tolling committee as another reason why. Where they have it settled is just very difficult for us as a community because we have. You know, in addition to just normal congestion and normal traffic, we have an additional issue with. You know. Low-income residents and rent burdened residents that don't need. An additional tax for just trying to go to work. When we don't have public transportation options, so it was just a thought I had.
Council President Grimes, I will say that, um, Triment commissioned a study that Alta. Um, planning group, um, worked on. And it overlaid access to bus stops with census tracts. And we were able to take advantage of that with our twelve moving forward program. And in our last quarterly report that we presented. Um, to you. It showed these, the purple, I don't know if you remember like the purple maps, then the, the deeper the purple, the, oh, I'm sorry. Um, the more, um, the, the higher need area of access to, um. To uh bus stops and uh transit. And so they are working, they are looking at that and, um, uh. There is some work going on in that, in that space as well.
Any other questions or comments for Karen? Well, thanks Karen for the update. Um. I look forward to hear more about our, you know, as our housing production strategy rolls out. And our equal housing solutions to see. You know, maybe we touch base every quarter, every semiannually and see how things are going. And uh, one of those key features is going to be communications and outreach. In addition to the technical stuff, so thanks for giving us an update.
Absolutely. We also, I just want to throw in one other. Thing since we brought in those panelists, they're, um. They're, they're, I think, very willing to help us also in certain ways. For example. Peg Malloy runs the finance uh programs. Ed- finance education for homeownership. We can tap into that. Um, there's a variety of other things we can tap into with the other, I'm just giving one example, but there's a variety of other things we can tap into through the housing production strategy. With those panelists that we've now established relationships with. So that's another, uh, not direct but indirect route, um, to, to help us. Uh, move, move this forward and really get down to, to business with, with helping those that need the help.
Right, because I mean, realistically, this, we're not going to be the. Uh, the city's not going to solve this issue. It's a collection of partners and all of us working together will try to resolve this issue. But no one, any, they're going to do it by themselves.
Right, yes.
All right, well, thanks Karen. All right, so next up, we shift into, I believe, a public hearing. Uh, so yes, we have a public hearing, item number one. Consideration of ordinance number one, four, six, three, dash, two, one. The Planning Commission's recommendation on amendments PTA twenty-one dash zero, 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 two. To the twelfth and development code to implement Oregon middle housing co-re requirements, otherwise known as HB two thousand and one. I see Mr. Beers here and Mr. Cooper. I assume you're going to be discussing this?
We, we are, Sean, are you going to have the script ready after our presentation as that order of events tonight, or do you want to? Read it now?
So I can pull the script, absolutely. Um, this is a, uh, you know, a legislative hearing, so the script. Uh, is not a required script for the, uh, as a quasi judicial.
Okay, great. I just wanted to make sure. Thank you. Um, so I'll pull up the presentation in just one moment. Whoops, one slide back. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Steve Cooper. I'm the Assistant Community Development Director, and I'm here to. Present the middle housing code amendments for adoption this evening. And before I get into the presentation, I just wanted to. Um, thank a few people, express gratitude to the State Department of Land Conservation and Development for providing grant funding. Um, and then to our consultant, MIG Planning, who was the consultant that helped us under the grant. And then, um, thank you to the public who participated and helped shape. The code that became these amendments. Uh, particularly additionally, I'd like to thank the Planning Commission and Chair Beers, who's here with us tonight to present the Planning Commission's. Recommendation who met repeatedly over the past year, uh, to consider and mull over these amendments. Um, and then lastly, I'd just like to give a special thanks to our CD Attorney, Sean Brady. We did a lot of work getting these two code amendments, but, um, as you may or may not know, there's actually a lot of work that. Goes into creating, into bringing that into actually being an ordinance, and so just, um. Thank you to Sean for that. So next presentation is going to be pretty brief, and I think it's going to be most information that you've seen before. Um, so we'll recap just briefly the project purpose. Project schedule, summary of the public feedback that we've received to date. Um, and was incorporated into the project overview of the code changes themselves. Um, just a little bit of information on next steps. Um, and then finally, questions, discussion, and, um, as I mentioned. A recommendation on behalf of the planning commission from our chair beers. So recap of the project purpose, um. Was intended primarily to, um, with two kind of twin aims, and I think there's some additional secondary aims, but the. First of the two twin aims was consistent with the principles of the twelve and twenty forty project was to. Um, help encourage diversity of housing types in Tuolton. We heard that from you as a council. We heard that from the planning commission. We heard that from the public. Consistently as a piece of feedback. Obviously, when HB two thousand and one is passed and then the, um. Rules implementing. Uh, that piece of legislature came along, they fit in very nicely with, um, the twelve and twenty forty project, and so. It was, uh, a good amount of synergy between those two. Um, so the objectives. Of the project on the slide there, removing code barriers, um. Eliminating what's called subjective language, so going away from language that would. Um, talk about the character of the housing to actual objective requirements such as the housing can only be so tall or have a certain setback. And I'll get into that a little more in some of the subsequent slides. And then lastly, there's some, um, other miscellaneous rules and, uh, legislation and court cases related to housing that the code amendments incorporate. And just to refresh a recap on HB two thousand and one, um, so again, intended. With a similar aim of the twelve and twenty forty program, expanding housing options, particularly in the areas of. Oregon that were traditionally single-family only. This particular. Type or subtype of the HB two thousand and one, the legislation that applies to Tuolton and applies to large cities over twenty-five thousand population. And in the metro area, um, and requires the full suite of, uh, missing middle housing that you see here on the slide. And then last thing to note is that, uh, local code requirements may not cause unreasonable cost or delay. So in other words, uh, local jurisdictions. Can't pile on sort of harder requirements, um, for middle housing projects to meet. Um, whether that intentionally or unintentionally would cause unreasonable cost or delay. I think we've all seen this slide many a time before, um, it just shows some of the various middle housing types, obviously not all of the ones covered. By the bill, um. Are shown, and then there's some additional types. The project schedule, so we kicked off in October of twenty twenty, um, went through, um, code concepts in early twenty twenty-one. Uh, had the draft amendments, um, a lot of back and forth and work on that from March to September of twenty twenty-one, and then we recently in October. Uh, met with the planning commission to get their recommendation, and then we're here with you this evening, um, to ask for final adoption of the code. Public feedback, again, just to summarize this, uh, pretty briefly, um, some of the concerns highlighted and yellow and strategies that are contained within the code amendments themselves to meet those concerns. Um, I will just reiterate that we heard these concerns both from members of the public, the planning commission, and then the council, um, counselors yourselves. Uh, parking was, I think, the, the most prominent, um, conversation piece. And what we did with the parking concerns is we, um, just reiterate, we're limited in. By the law as far as what we could do, and so we did the most we could. And the primary, um. Thing we did was we did not, um, accept the. The, um, model codes suggestion that we include on-street parking in the number of. Uh, total required parking spaces for a particular middle housing development. And so in other words. The minimum number of off-street parking spaces that each unit would be required to. Um, include would have to be actually. Off-street and on-street parking would not count towards that. It's, I think, good news for us in Tuolton where most of the streets are developed with. Um, parking on both sides, so we compared to some jurisdictions that have parking only on one side, et cetera, or in, um, better shape. Housing infill, so the characters maintained through design standards, since that's primarily, um, height and some other restrictions that I'll talk about a little bit when I talk about the specific code amendments. Uh, maintenance, there were concerns essentially that, uh, you know, potentially non-owner occupied housing might have maintenance issues a little bit different than. What the community is used to, and. There we highlighted the fact that there's a strong municipal code and code enforcement program here in Tuolton. Um, and then we also heard concerns about the environment, um. Concerns about, uh, the additions to existing infrastructure, and then of course, safety from adding additional dwelling units as infill. Um, and so I think that the key takeaway on that was, was findings that middle housing, I mean, specifically infill middle housing would help. Uh, encourage density, which ultimately, um, helps meet climate-oriented goals. And then lastly, housing trace uncertainty. Um, I mentioned just briefly those clear and objective requirements in addition to being kind of. Um, you know, fair, and I think similar to what is applied in the single-family residential housing context. They also help to increase housing supply and opportunity by providing certainty. Um, to the developer that, the project that they propose, if it meets those requirements, would be approved. Um, summary of the code amendments, we have three slides just to talk about this, and I'll try to, you've seen this. Uh, previously, I'm at our last work session, I believe, and so I'll try to. Go through it at a moderate speed, and if we have any questions, I'm happy to stop or go back as necessary. Uh, but chapter thirty-one is our general provisions definition, so as you'd imagine, a lot of those needed to change. Um, because of the addition and complexities of the middle housing themselves. Chapter thirty-two is the procedures, and so the key takeaway there is the, um, to meet those clear and objective requirements, middle housing developments. But he processes a type one, and so, um, to make an analogy, if somebody has a lot that's developable and they come in and they want to build a single-family house. They have to submit for a minor architectural review or a type one architectural review that. Um, looks at the specific design standards and then setbacks for the single-family home and approves it. It's. Bundled with the building permit process, and so, um. In line with the requirements of HB two thousand and one, those, that process for middle housing types would be similar. Um, the chapter thirty-three, applications and approval criteria, um, just ties in with chapter thirty-two and gives some additional. Information there. Chapter thirty-four, special regulations, there were some. Slightly overdue updates to our accessory dwelling unit code from a previous, um, Senate bill, and so that was, those updates were made to that code, and then it was moved to. Chapter seventy-three A, which is where all other design standards for, um, dwelling types are contained. Chapter thirty-six, um, subdividing partitions and property line adjustments, um. So that's essentially in line with some of those up miscellaneous updates to state law and case law that I mentioned on the second slide. Or clear and objective requirements. Chapter thirty-nine, use categories, and so that's a chapter that is kind of similar to the definitions, section, definitions for types of. Um, housing and land uses, and so just clarifying that further. Um, the next few chapters, which are, um, fairly similar to each other. Uh, are the actual zoning district chapters themselves, and so where necessary, added the permitted uses that weren't. Previously permitted, or if they were conditionally permitted, changing them from conditional to permitted. Um, in all the zones, uh, where middle housing was allowed, it added the. Cottage cluster housing type. Um, and then, um, other updates to standards such as minimum lot size and coverage standards. The one standard that I would like to highlight here, which was, um, one of the few pieces of the model code that we pulled into our code. Was a introduction of a floor area ratio. Um, and it's a little bit of a complicated formula, but the long and the short of it is, is that the. Floor area ratio on smaller lots requires a smaller structure type, and the intent of that provision, based on the feedback that we heard. Was to make sure that we don't have, um. In a clear and objective way. I suppose, make sure that we don't have, uh, structures that have a, um, character that is not consistent with the law on which it's being developed, so that you don't have a huge hulking structure on a smaller lot. Um, in chapter fifty, we actually allow certain housing types in very specific limited areas, and so we had to add a little bit of middle housing code there. Um, state seventy-three A, the state design standards. So as I mentioned a couple. Slides ago, um, applying the existing design standards that apply to single-family detached housing to middle housing types. Um, and then. Adding a whole section, which was mostly pulled from the model code, um, for cottage, excuse me, cottage cluster. Um, housing types, and so that's those, uh, single development that has lots of little up to nine hundred square foot. Um, almost tiny homes on them. It's a very specific thing, but it was pushed through in the state law and envisioned to be adopted, so. We did so, um, as I mentioned, the accessory dwelling unit changes in line with previous changes to state law. And then, um, what you three, what you see in seventy-three. Um, A and B is previously some of the middle housing types were considered multiple family along with other larger multifamily like apartment complex, and so. There are some amendments necessary to untangle those two types of development, which are now separate. Middle housing is separate from multifamily. Um, seventy-three C, so as I mentioned, um, updating the parking ratios to be consistent with the requirements of the middle housing, some of those we. Could not change, and so we did what we could with what we had to work with there. And then lastly, chapter seventy-five, um, just updating my nearly driveway with its basic standards for middle housing types. Public outreach, so, um, as you can see from the slide, we did. Quite a great deal of it. Um, we were glad to have two council work sessions where we got some additional feedback and a lot of that public input that helped shape the final code amendments was. Keen to those two work sessions. Um, as I mentioned, the planning commission worked incredibly hard on. Um, conducting four separate public meetings, and, um, I think they really tried to. Carefully consider the implications of. The House bill and what these amendments would mean in their community. They also had a webinar, um, to inform the public and seek feedback on these changes in February of twenty twenty-one. And then we had a public survey, uh, the results which we presented at the second of those two. Council work sessions that was in May twenty twenty-one. Um, and then as far as the final code amendments, um, we've published, uh. And made public notice, um, consistent with the procedures in the Tuolton Development Code for a legislative code amendment like this one. Um, as I mentioned previously, we had a public meeting at the planning commission that was open to public testimony on October twenty-first. And then we are here this evening at the city council hearing, open to the public to consider adoption of the amendments. And with that, I will turn it over to Planning Commission Chair Bill Beers to make the planning commission recommendation.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Mayor and city councillors. Uh, nice to be with you today. Um, so we're on the twenty-first of October, Steve gave us this presentation, very similar to what you're seeing. Um, and for us, uh. As he, uh, mentioned, it was kind of the culmination of a lot of meetings, and it was nice to get into the nuts and bolts of the actual, uh, code changes. Um, so we asked a lot, a lot of questions about the housing types, um, especially the cottage cluster, just because it was new for some of us. Uh, I was not very familiar with it. Um, and as you might imagine, we asked a lot of questions about parking and how that works. Um, I had a lot of questions about that as well. Um, ultimately, though, we felt these changes, um, it removed the subj- the subjective requirements from our code. Um, and are consistent with the twelts and twenty forty-four, twenty forty goals for more types of different housing here in Tuolton. And so we unanimously recommend its approval. Thank you.
And that concludes my presentation, unless there's any questions on any of the slides, I'm happy to go back and. Just happy to open up for general questions, and thank you.
Thanks, Steve. A couple of things I want to do before we get to questions. Uh, one is want to make sure people are aware that the criteria for granting PTA twenty-one dash zero, 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 two. Are outlined in exhibit one to the ordinance. And I also, uh, don't want to be negligent. And I also don't want to be negligent of asking, does any member of the council wish to abstain from further participation in this hearing? Okay, I see none. So with that, the next thing we'll be doing is I'll ask members of public to provide testimony either in favor or against the P T A. So is there anyone attending this meeting who is in support of P T A twenty one zero 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 two, who would like to state their support? All right, seeing none, I'll move on. Who would like to state their opposition to approval of P T A twenty one zero 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 two? Okay, hearing none, that will be, we'll move on to go ahead and city council questions for staff. I saw Council Pratt's hand up.
Well, first, I just had a couple of questions for clarification. Where you had the townhomes and duplexes and cottage clusters, it said, it always is ended with subject to review. And I just wondered what subject to review meant to general terms.
Yeah, that's a great, great question, Councilor. Thank you. Really what that means is it means that it's the the use itself is allowed, but the use would still have to comply with those standards. So somebody can't kind of force say, well, you said that we're allowed to build a duplex, so I'm going to build it. And you know, you still have to comply with the design standards, which have, you know, they're they dictate to some degree material and design from of the outside of the structure in line with kind of what you'd expect, similar to some of the others recently developed single family homes around Twelton. And then they'd have to comply with things like that floor area ratio and building height and setbacks and other design standards. That's still a review. It's just that we can't bring anything in subjective like saying that this this dwelling doesn't, you know, isn't consistent with the neighborhood or or, you know, brings down property values or something like that.
Okay, and that was my second question, which I think you sort of answered was like the design standards for the middle housing type have to apply like those to single families. So does that just mean like you were saying, like the look, the materials?
Yeah, they're 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 different things. It's it's essentially it's a menu of about a dozen choices. And then you pick, I think it's six or eight of them. And it would be things like, you know, covered entry, kind of standard design features that you might see, but it's, you know, trim, you know, trim around windows. It's basically amazing most particularly in the single family home range. Most people kind of expect these as normal features of buying a house, but it's to ensure that you don't have kind of totally two dimensional type of, you know, it looks like a movie set kind of house. And so the the idea is, I think generally is that, you know, we have limited range of what we can require, but it seems like in general folks are, you know, satisfied with the way in which single family dwellings look in in town. And so I think the thought was that the the more we could make other types look similar to that, the the better they would fit in with other types.
And then I guess my last thing is I, you know, I'm still not happy about the whole parking thing, but my understanding is that because of H V two thousand and one, we have to adopt these less parking space availability. And that if we, and if we don't do these changes, is it correct that we have to just adopt the state model at some point?
That would be correct. Yeah. If we don't have a compliant code of our own, we'd have to adopt a state the state model code, and then that would stay in place until we amend our code to comply with it. And yeah, I think that it's it's a valid consideration and we pushed back on it. And I know I tuned in earlier in the work session and heard about the climate friendly and equitable communities. And I think that's going to be a discussion that we're going to have as well. And I think, you know, similar kinds of push on D L C D. The thing that they, that D L C D has been steadfast in, and I'll just say this as it applies to the middle housing code is that it doesn't preclude anyone from building or parking. It just says we can't require them to build it. And so what D L C D's feedback on that has been that if your community is one where you know, a duplex would demand, you know, would be rented or sold to somebody who typically has a, you know, two or three car ownership family, then it's likely the developer would would build more. I don't know if I necessarily think that argument applies to smaller housing types. I think that might apply to a larger structure where, you know, a developer for a commercial developer wouldn't provide no parking, even if they weren't required to. But I'll just, I'll say that's that's the argument that's being made, whether or not you or I agree with it. I think we know the answer, but.
Right. So anyway, my last comment is just, I know a lot of hard work went into this to comply with that and kind of meet the needs that we're asking for. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Questions for Steve or Bill? Council President Grimes.
Thank you. It's not so much a question. I think it's just more a statement of how much I appreciate the work that you and the planning commission has put into taking mandates from H B two thousand and one that are not all palatable and taking them and translating them where we could to things that make a lot of sense for the city and for the development in the city. And I really appreciate that because, you know, there are things in there that were not crazy, that I personally am not crazy about. And I think as a council, we've got some reservations about. But I think that the work that you guys have done have really taken a lot of the points that I will say shoved down our throats because that doesn't sound very nice, but I think that's what happened. And I think that you've made them very twelton friendly and very in keeping with the tone and the style of our community as well as our goals for diversified types of housing, because that is a legitimate concern that we've all had is diversified types of housing and different venues of affordable housing. And I think you guys have done a great job with that, Bill, you and your group. Excellent work. So thank you for taking something that was really difficult and bringing out the best parts for our community. I really appreciate that.
I think that feedback means a lot. You'll have to pardon the noise as several preteen boys congregating in the room outside.
No problem. That's the fun of Zoom. Council Reyes.
Thank you, Steve. Very good presentation. And I'm just curious. My neighborhood, at least in my block where I walk around, I haven't seen any of my neighbors expanding or having an A D U or any, any of that. Has anyone has anyone volunteered to show their like new? Has anyone done anything that we can like see? Or is it coming in the future to see these cluster places or what is it called cottages? And I mean, I know I've seen some like like by the Meridian, those nice little homes for for our mature community. But I'm thinking more like, have we, do we know anyone that will volunteer that would like to show a something that they've done? I'm just curious to see how our public and our community is responding to building these kinds of I guess, housing. I'm just, I just really am curious because I don't see anyone in my neighborhood do too much, but that's because it's cold and we're hibernating, so.
So far, we've had some people who are kind of tracking the adoption of these code amendments and I think are interested in in exploring further once they're adopted. So if that's the case, we can certainly, if we get a little case study, we'd be happy to come back and circle back with council and and show them how, you know, how they're working on the ground.
Sample. Yeah, I would like to see curious how people are responding and and if they're I know it hasn't been adopted. I just, they really expressed interest and say, yeah, we'll do it. And it's my backyard and you're like, you're welcome to come see the progress.
We, like I said, we have one or two so far. And so we'd be happy to share those if they look forward.
The Home Builders Association has done a couple seminars with examples of what's been built in the Portland metro area to meet some of these needs. Most of it, of course, is in the city of Portland. But they have all kinds of examples they can show you. If you go to their website, you probably can look up an old seminar on this. And they have lots and lots of examples. They have builders who specialize in this.
Wow. Thank you.
I want to bring, circle back to a comment Steve made about the climate friendly and equitable communities that one of the discussions was about the timing of this and the difficulty in trying to implement this. H B two thousand and one with climate friendly and equitable communities that were the ass of D L C D is to slow this, you know, slow the roll on sustainable communities and climate friendly that, you know, most cities are trying to put their arms around H B two thousand and one. And now this is coming down the pipe, especially when it comes in terms of parking. And they've heard loud and clear, don't know if it's going to change anything that you know, most cities would like a delay on implementation of this or a stretching out of the rulemaking process. So those folks who have to make the deadline, the large cities who have to make the deadline for H B two thousand and one can just focus on that for now and then switch tracks to the climate friendly and equitable community discussion. But any other questions? All right, with that and seeing no further questions, I'll go ahead and close the public portion of the hearing. And we'll move into deliberations on P T A twenty one dash zero zero two, three zero two. So I'm sorry, P T A twenty one zero 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 two.
I'll make a motion for first reading by title only.
I have a motion and a second for first reading by title only. Any discussion on that motion? All right, Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Pratt.
Hi.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
The chair votes aye also. Sean.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty three dash twenty one, an ordinance relating to the land, to land use and middle housing, amending and creating new provisions in toilet and development code chapters thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty six, thirty nine, forty, forty one, fifty eight, seventy three, A, seventy three, B, seventy three, C, and seventy five.
You have to say it faster next time. All right.
What? A motion for second reading of ordinance one, four, six, three, dash, twenty one.
Second.
Yeah. I have a motion and a second for second reading of ordinance number one, four, six, three, dash, two, one by title only. Any discussions of emotion? All right. Council Sacco.
Hi.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
I vote aye also, unanimous. Mr. Brady.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number fourteen sixty three dash twenty one, an ordinance relating to land use and middle housing, amending and creating new provisions in toilet and development code chapters thirty one, thirty two, thirty three, thirty four, thirty six, thirty nine, forty, forty one, fifty eight, seventy three, A, seventy three, B, seventy three, C, and seventy five.
Thank you.
I guess I'll make a motion then to adopt ordinance number fourteen sixty three dash twenty one.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to adopt ordinance number one, four, six, three, dash, twenty one. Any discussions on those motions? Council Sacco, excuse me, Council Sacco.
Aye.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
And I vote aye also, which unanimous, the ordinance is adopted. Thank you, Steve and Mr. Beers.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Same to you. That brings us to general business and our first item on general business is Twalton Moving Forward, our fourth annual report. And I'm assuming there he is, Mr. McCarthy, how are you?
Hello.
Yeah, so while Mike pulls up the the presentation, I was just going to make a few opening remarks. We are thrilled to present our fourth annual report associated with the twenty million dollar transportation bond program known as Twalton Moving Forward. I want to take a step back to two thousand and eighteen, and there were three things that were really important, kind of our true north. One, this was single focused. It was all about transportation. Two, we we wanted to make sure that in the entire elected body was supportive. And we spent a long time talking about the act, the the what number we were going to go for, whether it was, it's some wanted a little bit higher, some wanted a little bit lower. So there was a lot of discussion, but it was really important that all seven councillors got on board and could support it. And then the third thing was that it was community driven. This wasn't something that staff sat around thinking up ways to, or projects. These were projects that were generated from the community. Those three things have been guiding principles throughout and really remain to this day and throughout the entire program. So being a community driven program and with a commitment to maintaining your support and the community's support, we work really hard to share information regularly. This is our fourth annual report, which is, of course, in the title. But this will be mailed to every address here in Twalton, the actual report, which is an attachment in your packet. In addition, we present quarterly reports. We've done three bus tours, two of them virtual, and have a robust web presence and social media efforts and just community engagement efforts throughout all of this. I want to call out our fantastic team led by Mike McCarthy. And with that, I will turn this presentation over to Mike to present our report.
Thank you, Sherilyn, and good evening, Mayor and councillors. The pleasure to be here and present this report and had another really good year. I'll keep knocking on wood because it's been really wonderful. And we are excited with how things are working. Except for the advancing the slides here. There we go. All right. So it's our fourth annual report. And we're getting to an exciting time in the program where we're really seeing things on the ground and really seeing, you know, things happening. So I think we put this together, the idea kept to call this the best year yet. And then we're also going to highlight some projects that are coming up just around the corner. And then our next quarter report will be in the spring of twenty two. And then people can always check out our website at twelfthandmovingforward.com to see more about what's happening. And this updated version of the report is on the website as well. So we've had a really good year. And a lot of great things have been happening, including opening up the Garden Corner Curves project. We've completed six projects, including Garden Corner Curves, and then some other smaller ones to talk about. We've got fourteen more underway, including a few that are in the construction stages. And several more coming that we're working on for next year and in twenty twenty three. Still working with the same program management team where we have a team led by Murray Smith designing most of the projects and then Alta Planning Design, working as our owner's representative. And Alta and Barney and Worth working together on public information and particularly getting out and listening to the community and talking with people about what they want and what needs can we address? As Sherilyn mentioned, that's the big north star of the program is listening to the people. So here's our updated project map. And I'm excited to see how much green we have on the map now. The green is projects that are completed and open to the public and, you know, being used. So it's really exciting. It's include Garden Corner Curves, Hazelbrook and Jergens, Sagertown Seventy Second, Boones Ferry, the downtown area over here, a number of other Boones Ferry down by Arapahoe and a number of other projects that have been completed this past year. We had the Garden Corner Curve celebration and I thought it was just amazing how well things came together there. I'm really excited with how the project came out. I think we were blessed to have a really good design team on that led by Wallace Engineering and a really good contractor in M E I. And some really good guests with the the marching band. Who I thought were wonderful. My kids were there and enjoyed that and they are now showing a lot more interest in marching bands. As well as a number of great things and I was really impressed with the video that John Carseboom. From the Garden Corner Nursery put together about the project and really talking about how much he liked it. So that was. Just wonderful to see. Right then. And so you've got the new safer multi-use path. It's a place to walk. And it's great to actually get out and walk the corridor now. Whereas it was one of the areas that I was really scared as a, someone who works on streets. There are certain places where it's just really scary to work and you end up just sprinting one place to another just to take your measurements or whatever you need to do. And then now I have a good place that's been working out great along with our pedestrian activated be- beacons, a lot of enhanced crosswalks. The driver feedback signs to. Kind of help people monitor their speed, especially as they're approaching the sharpest curve. And then all the work in the creek to improve the culvert and restore that. And treat stormwater before it enters the creek as well. So that's been just exciting to see that one built and done. We've completed several other projects around the city, including this one at Sagert and Seventy Second. Where we had an existing crosswalk. It's across a fairly busy street with people driving fairly quickly. And we added in the flashing beacons and we had to redo the ramps to meet ADA requirements for having the flashing beacons there. And I find that that's really helpful in getting drivers to stop when you're trying to cross the road and. And those have, I think, made a big difference. And we see a lot of people crossing there now. You know, as well as farther down the block at Walthamnoak. We see a lot of people crossing there as well and it's great to see how much those are being used. And several more that we've completed this year. So out at Ninety Fifth and Avery. That projects, you know, it's a more of an area projects around twelve and elementary school. So we are just finishing up the new crosswalk at Ninety Third and Avery. Which is the direction that we found the most kids were walking to the school from. So we have a new crosswalk there with flashing lights to help kids get to school and then a new always stop. At the Ninety Fifth and Sagert intersection, which we're finding is really helping a lot of the issues that we've seen there. Twalton Road, Sweet Drive, the community park. So this is right in front of the police station. The first phase is now substantially complete. The contractor is working on some final. Punch listing cleanup items. That includes flashing lights at that crosswalk, redoing the sidewalk in front of the police station. So it's no longer. Buckled and waved from tree roots. Phase two on that is coming and actually was on the consent agenda to award the construction contract. And that will improve the sidewalk from that crosswalk over to the railroad crossing. And that got, phase two took a longer develop because of the need to. Work things out with the railroad, just how it approaches there. We also had a new flashing lights on Boones Ferry near the Green Lot or crossing from the Commons to the Pole Center. And then Boones Ferry Road at just a little south of Arapahoe. Added flashing lights there as well. And that's a new fairly innovative design that includes street light heads with the crosswalk. And they're solar powered and. Enable us to put that in quite a bit more efficiently. And allows the crosswalk to be illuminated, which is really important for safety. Particularly this time of year when people are crossing at five o'clock, but it's dark. And then some more flashing lights on Hazelbrook and Jergens and a new crosswalk there. And Nyberg Lane near Fifty Seventh Avenue, some improvements that we heard a lot about from the community. To try to reinforce to people that they need to stop at those stop signs. And work for safety of pedestrians that are trying to cross to Brown's Ferry Park. Now we're still working on Martinazzy and Sagert. And this is what it looked like, at least a couple of weeks ago when we took our last pictures. We are soon hoping to see the traffic signal heads coming in here with the mastarm poles. Unfortunately, the signal heads, some of the key electronics that go into the. Kind of the guts of the controller that control the traffic signal. Gotten delayed with the global supply chain issues. So unfortunately, we're looking about February or March before we'll be able to actually get the signal in and turned on. It does include some new crosswalks. And widen the road out for much better bike lane and to make the lanes more normal width. That'll be coming in early twenty twenty two when we end up putting in the signal and restriping there. And we've had some wonderful artwork. That's been getting installed and the south side of Sagert Street actually works out to be a great little walk now. It includes. More than ten of the different stamps that we've been using. Here's some examples. The Happy Deer. And then this unnamed is vegetables. Descriptions of them being yummy. And a very interesting design in here in this, this fish. And they've been installed at each of the projects where we've had new concrete going in. And. I've been real excited about it and it's, we've seen a lot of community excitement about it. Hearing from some of the artists about how exciting it is to see some of their work in place. And. We're also out talking with the people quite a bit, getting ready for what we're planning to build over the next couple of years. This photo is from out along Boones Ferry Road. I think we're right just near Blake and Elsie. And really asking people, what do you want to see? And how would you want us to improve this? So we're working on conceptual design for a project along Boones Ferry. To fill in sidewalk and bike lane gaps. From just out the twelfth and Sherwood Road all the way down to our southern city limits. And a lot of what we've been hearing is really fix up the existing pathways. And particularly places where they're bumped by tree roots. And then fill in some of the short sidewalk sections and some minor widening to add pavement and bike lane where we need it. And then hearing about some crosswalks and some other issues there. So more to come in a couple of months on kind of what we've heard from the public and how we can address the issues in a more specific project design. And then some more of what we're working on, these are the new, or at least five of the proposed neighborhood traffic safety projects to be built next summer. Short sidewalk section along Avery. New flashing beacons at the Martinazzy Mohawk, across Martinazzy Avenue at Mohawk. And then a project in the Stone Ridge neighborhood. And then improving Martinazzy near the Fred Meyer driveway. And trying to help people walking across Sagert Bridge. And then we talked about this a couple of months ago. When we presented those to you and included the map that Sherilyn had mentioned about some of the transit needs around the city. And a lot of these projects happen to be in those areas. And then one more of this proposed in the next slide is on Boones Ferry near downtown. Flashing lights of those crosswalks there. And here's our report card. Of. It's an annual report, so we had to have quite a bit of numbers in here. And each of the projects that have been finished, the estimated cost of how much they've. How much we spent on them as we finished. And then the ones underway, what we think it will be by the time we get to those being finished and a few of the ones that are planning to start in the future. And then if you added up these numbers very closely, you realize it's actually more than twenty million. And actually totals more like twenty four million. And we had some really good news that I think Don Hudson, are you on the call here than able to share that?
I am here. All right. So I get the honor of throwing more money at you and explaining why. You remember, so we sold these twenty million dollars of worth of bonds back in August of twenty eighteen. And so I'm here tonight to kind of remind you the good news that we're able to share with you right after that bond sale. It was a good time to go into the bond market. And because we're an attractive risk, we were able to sell the bonds at a premium. Which meant that the investors were willing to pay more upfront for those bonds. In order to have higher rate of return in the later years. So we actually brought in about twenty three million dollars worth of project funds. We had almost a three million dollar premium. When we sold those bonds. And so that added another three million dollars worth of project funds available. And we've been investing those money. So you may recall that in my investment reports or my quarterly financial reports, I talk about our investment returns and we've been able to maintain even in this current market. A reasonable rate of return. And so those idle funds that we don't, that aren't going out to the projects right away are invested. We brought in to date about one point two million dollars in investment earnings. We will continue to invest those funds and obviously as we're spending more of that, then we have less to, to invest. But we anticipate that number will also continue to grow a little bit. It's about, right now about fourteen thousand dollars a month that we bring in. And that'll, that'll decline as the, the market's changing, but also as we spend funds and have less idle. So. The really good news is out of a twenty million dollar bond sale, we are sitting here with the total of about twenty four million dollars worth of. Funds available to spend on these wonderful projects that the team has put together and, and spending out on our transportation needs.
Thank you, Don. And then the, the graph here shows how much was spent out of those twenty four million. And. We've had a number of expenses from this summer that are still just working their way through the process. So by the time we pay all the bills from the summer, we'll be up at about actually twelve million in spent funds. So about halfway through what we have. And we've been getting some really good positive news coverage about it and positive feedback in the community. Here's a number of the stories that have been coming in. And it's been wonderful to see things that are positive. And the community is really appreciating what we're doing and people seeing the value and the practical solutions that we're trying to identify to what we hear when we listen to the people. And so we have all this information in English. And as well, we also have an Spanish. And I'll throw a little bit of Spanish language video. Hola, hoy queremos compartir con ustedes una breve actualización sobre el programa de transporte de la ciudad de Twalton llamada Twalton Avanzando. Este programa es pagado por una medida de bono de veinte millones de dólares aprobado por los votantes en mayo del dos mil dieciocho. Hasta la fecha, veinte proyectos han sido construidos por todo alrededor de la ciudad. Y catorce proyectos más están en progreso. Usted puede haber visto alguno de estos en su vecindario, por ejemplo, cruces peatonales más seguros con faros destellantes. Señales que muestran la velocidad a los conductores. Nuevas señales de tráfico, mejores aceras, rampas para descapacitados y líneas de bicicleta. Dos de nuestros proyectos favoritos completados este año son el proyecto Garden Corner Curves en la Avenida ciento cinco, Blake Street y la Avenida ciento ocho. Terminados de construir después de dos años. Y luces peatonales ahora operando en los cruces en la calle Sagert y la Avenida setenta y dos, cerca de la escuela Horizon Christian School. Otro proyecto que le puede ser familiar será completado la siguiente primavera en una de las intersecciones más concurridas de Twalton. Este será reconstruir la intersección en la Avenida Martinazzy y la calle Sagert. E instalar una nueva señal de tráfico ahí. Qué fantásticas noticias, ¿verdad? Y este trabajo seguirá mejorando la seguridad de los cruces peatonales en la Avenida noventa y cinco y la calle Avery. Cerca de la escuela Twalton Elementary. Si usted quiere aprender más acerca de esos proyectos, puede ir en línea a twaltonmovingforward.com. Muchas gracias. Se despide su amiga Betsy Rodriguez Roof. I think I also have to clap for Betsy on that. I thought that was great. And you're all aware that you're monitoring the progress and it was fun to do the bus tour and. I sure hope next year's tour is in person rather than virtual, but we'll see what happens when we get there. And any questions or discussion?
Can you stop presentation mode and?
Stop shit there.
There we go. Thanks, Mike. Questions?
I'll bring it back up for a couple more slides right at the end, but. It's our discussion time.
Council Pratt.
This has been the greatest project and it's kind of nice to have bragging rights. Something I didn't do a whole lot on. But I just appreciate that you really, this whole project has been focused on safety and. It's great. And I was wondering if we could change our city motto to we are an attractive risk for Dawn.
Love that phrase.
Yeah. My, my question, and I don't know if there's an answer to this, but it's so great. You're doing that. The improvements by Fred Meyer, but as soon as you get onto Fred Meyer property, if you're coming up Martinazzy there, there's. And I know it's their property, but it's really unsafe for pedestrians because you, there's a little dirt path, but there's no. Sidewalk or anything and it's where all the cars are turning in and out and it's super dangerous and is there anything we? Can do to help entice them to make that? I mean, it's really a safety hazard and there's a lot of people that walk there.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's a good point. I think we will see what we can do. I think part of our project is trying to help make it easier to cross to the north side of the driveway. And there's a little bit more of a walkway in from there.
Okay.
We can try to work with Fred Meyer because there's definitely room for improvement there.
Yeah, and there's a bus stop right there too, so. I just, a lot of, I just, every time I go there, I kind of look concerned, but I understand it's private property. But anyway, thank you very much.
But we are working with TriMet on that bus stop and ways that that might be improved as well.
Other questions for Mike? Council Reyes.
Mike, thank you very much. It was really nice and like Council Pratt said, it, it gives us some, some pride and bragging rights about our city. Does it, and I know this is, this might have been discussed earlier or way back when, when the bond was out there, but. Does it include also street lights just to, there's not just, I mean, I know we're doing a lot of infrastructure, but sometimes adding just. A extra street light will just lighten up a little bit and then make it brighter, especially, you know, Oregon. It's pretty dark in, in the winter. So, or repairing, just. I know, I know somehow PG works with us on that, but I just thought about that also a way of safety, even though. It might not be like widening. I know you talked about the bridge right there on Sagert. There may be sometimes street light will help a little bit as we are able to see. Walkers or bike riders, because sometimes you can't, it's not so much that you just, you just can't see them because it's dark. And there, we, we tend to wear a lot of dark clothes too in the winter here, so.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a good point. And that's some of the things we're looking at with some of the projects coming up. With the one in the Stone Ridge neighborhood, that's one of the things we've heard from already is desire for better lighting. And there's, there's some lights in there, but I think. We can add a bit more. I like the suggestion of the Sagert Bridge as well. And yeah, so it's something we're looking at with each of them.
Thank you.
Other questions for Mike? Council Sacco.
Not really a question, but I did, I did use the new Garden Corner Curves. A couple of weekends ago when I went for my run and it was amazing. It was the first time I was ever able to run that section of Twalton. So that was really exciting. And then I also just wanted to express gratitude for. Creating that informational video in Spanish for our Spanish speaking community. I just am really proud of our community for doing that. And so thank you for taking that extra step. I think that's amazing.
Great, great. Well, thank you and really thankful for the, the team that put it together. And I thought Betsy did a great job with it.
Very enthusiastic.
Very clear too, it's super, she did, Betsy did a really good job with. You know, getting the message across really clearly. So I like that. Thank you.
Great.
Other questions for Mike? I've just got one on the Sweek project phase two. You're mentioning fixing the sidewalks in front of the police department. There's that section in front of the twelfth and Heritage Center. The corner there, it's, some of the sidewalks there are also buckled. Does that include? The corner there, it's the, some of the sidewalks there are also buckled. Is that included in the project?
It's actually not right now because we're, the phase two goes from the crosswalk to the park.
Okay.
So it's in front of the tennis office and the vet clinic. And that'll be bringing the curb actually in towards the road and winding the sidewalk out.
But you, you mentioned you were doing redoing the police sidewalk.
The one in front of the police station has been redone.
Yeah. Okay. Because I've gotten a couple of comments from the folks at the Heritage Center. There's a section of the sidewalk there that's buckled as towards the corner near the police department.
You can take a look at that and see what we might be able to do.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Mayor, when I had, I got a complaint about that as well and forwarded that along to Bert Olheiser for the annual sidewalk program.
Okay.
So I know that it, it is on his radar as well.
Okay, thank you. That is, you know, the, how we, the, our senior residents who walk in the Heritage Center and I want someone tripping and stuff there because it's a little bit of a buckle there. So, and it's a popular place for meetings and stuff with, for smaller meetings right now. And when we had the Heritage Center, the historical side, he had their auction. A couple, three folks came up to me and talked to me about it. And I'm passing it on since it popped up here during this discussion.
Okay. So it's particularly right along Sweek between the Heritage Center building and the road.
And the corner, yeah, between the Heritage Center and the corner near the police department. There's a section that's a little bit buckled. But it sounds like Bert's on it. So if you want to talk to Bert.
Yeah, I'll talk with Bert and we'll see what we can do.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for Mike? I appreciate you, Mike, taking over the baton from Jeff Fox on this. You're doing a great job on this and we appreciate your effort as well as the whole team. Thanks for doing this.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there a couple more slides to share here right at the end?
All right.
And so we can check everything out on the website. TowaltonMovingForward.com. And that's all been updated with the current information. And Garden Corner Nursery's chickens, I think it provided us with the classic question to end this presentation on. Field, why did the chicken cross the road? And now we can say is because there's a pathway on the other side.
And we, yeah, we noticed those chickens that day. We're like, oh, were those chickens realized cars are going to start coming through now? This might not be the best idea coming in the future.
We had a similar concern. And at least from what I heard from John, they seem to have figured it out pretty quickly.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
All right. So with that, we have item number two, consideration of resolution number 5589-21, authorize the city manager to execute settlement documents related to the national opioid litigation.
Yes, our city attorney, Sean Brady, is going to give you a little briefing about this before you take a vote.
Great. Thank you. Sean Brady, city attorney. As you mentioned, Mayor, this is a resolution to authorize the city manager to execute settlement documents related to the national opioid litigation. That litigation is a $26 billion national settlement. About 21 billion of that is going to be paid by what are known as the distributors. This is McKesson, Cardinal Health and AmerisourceBergen. And then Johnson and Johnson is part of that someone is going to pay another $5 billion nationally. With, with this authorization, it includes three documents, two participation agreements that will settle the national litigation, which the city of Towalton is not a plaintiff, but as this litigation has been, as this settlement has been negotiated, it provides a way for non-litigating entities to participate. And then the set, the third document is a state allocation agreement between the state of Oregon and local governments. And that was negotiated with between these 10 Oregon counties, including Washington County, as well as the city of Portland. Now the deadline for signing these documents is pretty quick. It's January 2nd of 2022. The state of Oregon's share of the settlement is $330 million. That assumes that all of the jurisdictions that are able to participate, do participate in the settlement. And then the structure of the settlement, Oregon receives a maximum of 330 million. But that can be reduced by up to 25% if the litigating entities, so those 10 counties in the city of Portland do not sign on. It, it further allows for a reduction of 15% if the counties and cities with a population of more than 30,000 do not sign in. And then for, for those smaller than 30,000, it, it has another 5% reduction if those don't. Towalton's total maximum, this is best case scenario, is $273,613. That would require all 81 eligible jurisdictions to also participate. And then that payout is over a period of either 18 years in the case of the distributors or for Johnson and Johnson, it's over a period of nine years. So roughly somewhere in the 12 to $15,000 a year maximum over that period of time. Now, the allocation agreement itself between Oregon and the jurisdictions, the local jurisdictions, including the city of Towalton. That agreement has a split of the $330 million potential settlement. 45% of that goes to the state. And that will, the state will create a fund to then distribute that, those dollars out. That will be set up legislatively and determined how those monies are distributed. And then the other 55% will go directly to local governments. And then those local governments, including Towalton, the use of the funds is restricted under the national opioid settlement to certain uses related to opioid abatement programs, intervention, treatment, education and recovery services. There's a list in the, both the staff report as well as the exhibits that list out the specific uses. With that, I will turn it over to you, Mayor.
Thank you. Questions for Sean? Council Pratt.
So say we get the whole 273,000 maximum. Are you saying that we'll get 55% of that and then the state will allocate us the other 45%?
No. So the, the 55, 45 split is through the $330 million total settlement. And then Towalton's portion of that, that, that we will get directly is a maximum of 273,000. So that, that, that is, that is essentially the full amount that Towalton will get. And then separately, if Towalton wanted to apply to the state for additional monies, it's, it can through the state system, which is that 45%.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. And then you're saying that it's restricted to certain uses, but it's really a dollar amount that to me, it doesn't seem like anything that'll support a long-term ongoing program. So that'll be interesting of how we use the funds when received.
Yes.
Council Sacco.
Sorry, mute problems. So all cities must agree to the settlement. Is there any re, current reason why any of the cities aren't going to agree that we know of? Or are there any issues with other cities that we've heard? Or does it seem like everybody's going to agree to the settlement? Do we know?
Yes, I think, you know, it's, it's certainly supported by the, the litigating entities and, and all of the, I think all the cities that participated in the, in the, in, in various group calls. I don't, you know, I haven't spoken to certainly every city or, and especially the smaller cities. That would be the question of how many of the, the really small cities are participating? Just because either they don't know of it, didn't get notice of it, or don't really want to participate for, you know, administrative reasons of, of just the hassle of, you know, trying to hire an attorney to, to explain or, or something of that nature.
Other questions for Sean? So I've, I've got two. So to Council Pratt's point about what you can use the monies for, item number six in the packet has approximately 10, you know, bullet points here. So that list is the, that is the list, what you can use the money for, correct? You can't add, delete, modify these 10 odd items are it, right?
That, that's correct.
All right. And then, so by signing in on, you know, by agreeing to the settlement, obviously this is kind of like a class action lawsuit that if you opt to settle, then you, I mean, I can see to Council Pratt's point. You know, others, was it or Council Sacco's point? You know, a city might think they might get more money on their own and not agree to the settlement. So my question is, as you said, we didn't have any litigation in the pipeline for this. And it seems, you know, the, the portion of money that we'd be get ideally, if it weren't agreed is a decent amount of money, not like earth shattering. We could be able to buy some, you know, naloxone and stuff like that for the police to, you know, have in their police cars and that probably exhaust 12 and a half thousand dollars right there. But any reason why we wouldn't agree to this, to sign on to this?
Yeah. The, the only reason I see if the council was interested in bringing its own separate lawsuit and that, that would require, you know, getting, getting an attorney involved who, who's an expert in these cases proving those, that Towalton was impacted. But otherwise, you know, settling the lawsuit as a, again, as a non-party and then allowing the maximum dollar amount for the state of Oregon to receive. It seems that that would, that would outweigh that, that interest.
Right. Cause I've, I've heard of certain states that are opting out of this and certain bigger cities, you know, who have the legal beagles to take this on, but I don't see us doing that. So any other questions? Council Sacco.
I don't know if this is going to come out as a question or a statement, but I mean, to my knowledge, we don't have a huge opioid problem. So I think that the settlement amount can do some good as far as naloxone. And I could see, you know, perhaps some syringe service programs that would be really helpful with for, you know, our city needs that aren't extreme, but could still provide some harm prevention that are needed here and there. So I guess that wasn't a question. That was a comment.
I, I agree with you. It's unexpected dollars to help us defray the cost of what has happened due to the opioid crisis.
And I do know that Washington County is, is looking to construct a, you know, a treatment facility. And so they may reach out to request, you know, some, some dollars related to that as well.
Council Reyes.
Uh, Councilor, Sacco brought in a, so this, yeah, I don't see either a huge problem here as far as to my knowledge or what my eyes can see around, when I drive around. But I feel like definitely I, I feel we can benefit from getting these prevention, even, even talking about it at, at our schools or local community networks, like churches or anything that gets kids involved or nonprofits in our community that, that provide that kind of prevention. And also, and, and forgive me, I'm not familiar with this. But I think she mentioned something about, is, is it the, if we find someone that's like overdosing and in a, that's what you were talking about. Is that Council Sacco, yeah, but that our emergency response community can have that or our officers of those who are, I guess, qualified to use that. Yeah, I can see that being beneficial for us to prevent or even react to something that's happening at the moment with those kinds of treatment that will help somebody's life or save someone's life from overdosing. So.
Well, I saw Chief Steel just popped on his camera. And I believe a lot of police departments are now giving naloxone to be, you know, that first, you know, intervention to be able to give that shot to stop some from over, over, overdosing, correct?
Yeah, that is correct. And, and great discussion. And you're all correct. Fortunately, we don't see this every day in our community. But unfortunately, we have people die in our community from overdoses as a result of this. All of our officers have access to naloxone. It's a generic for Narcan. It's in all of our patrol vehicles with our AED devices. And just last year, I know we, we utilized it at least three times on people that were overdosing and it honestly, it saved their lives. So we've been doing that for a couple of years now. We have not yet had to purchase this. It's all been provided to us either through Washington County or a partnership with Metro West Ambulance Service. But in the future, that's probably going to come to an end and we will be, you know, on the hook for buying that on our own. Again, the reality is we don't see deaths every day, but if you remember about a year ago, a number of controlled substances were decriminalized. So now when we contact people, which we frequently do, that are in possession of controlled substances, they, they receive a citation to be reported. The citation can be dismissed if they get an assessment. Honestly, that's not occurring. Most people just don't go to court and there's absolutely no record, you know, there's no penalty for that whatsoever. So the most people are not getting the treatment that they need. So if there was a county-wide effort to establish a treatment center and we could get people into that, that would be something that we would support within the police department as well.
Perfect. Thanks, Chief. Any other questions?
I'd like to motion to adopt resolution number 5589-21.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt. I lost my place. Resolution number 5589-21. Any discussion on the motion? Council Sacco.
I.
Council Pratt.
I.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
I.
And I vote I also. It's unanimous. The resolution is adopted. Thank you. Item number three, consideration of ordinance number 1462-21 related to parking. An amendment in Towalton Municipal Code Chapter 8-1 to delegate authority to the city manager to regulate parking at city offices and library parking areas at all city employee parking.
Yes, our deputy city manager, Megan George, is going to take this one.
I'll be short, I promise. Good evening, everyone. Before you is an ordinance that relates to parking. As you know, over this past year, we completed construction on the Towalton City Services Building. And as a result, we had the opportunity to restructure city offices and terminate our lease on the building on Seneca. And with all of these transitions, we learned that the authority to regulate parking around city offices and the library and the ability to regulate employee parking rests with the city council. And in addition to that, the code language is a little bit out of date and references a map that is no longer relevant. So this ordinance would do two things. First, it would delegate authority to the city manager to regulate parking near city offices and the library. And the more specific locations are detailed in that ordinance. It would also delegate authority to the city manager to regulate employee parking. The ordinance, as drafted in your agenda packet, outlines specific processes for making changes in each of those scenarios in accordance with current code language and other processes. With that, I'll see if there's any questions and turn it back to you, Mayor.
Questions for Megan? You don't want us telling you how to park? Come on. We know it all. You know, and we'll, we'll just work with Mike to make the smallest possible parking spot. So, you know, all you can park is your bicycle. But any questions for Megan?
This, that might mean additional meetings. So I don't think it's.
That's right. All right. No questions for Megan? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. Oh, for first reading by title only.
Need a second.
Yeah, somebody wanted second.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for reading by title only of ordinance number 1462-21. In discussion on the motions. Council Sacco.
I.
Council Pratt.
I.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
I.
I vote I also. Sean?
Mayor, ordinance number 1462-21, an ordinance relating to parking and amending 12th and Municipal Code Chapter 8-1 to delegate authority to the city manager to regulate parking at the city offices and library parking areas and all city employee parking.
I'll make a motion for second reading by title only.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for second reading by title only of ordinance number one, four, six, two, dash twenty-one. I'll go in reverse order. Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Pratt.
I.
Council Sacco.
I.
Council President Grimes.
Hi.
And I vote I also.
Thank you, mayor. Ordinance number fourteen, sixty-two, dash twenty-one, an ordinance related to parking and amending 12th and Municipal Code Chapter eight, dash one to delegate authority to the city manager to regulate parking at the city offices and library parking areas and all city employee parking.
Right. This is our last chance to not give Sherilyn all the power about parking.
I'm going to motion to adopt ordinance fourteen, sixty-two, dash twenty-one. That's going to be known as Sherilyn's Magic Wand.
Who seconded?
Oh, yeah.
Bria, okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance one, four, six, two, dash twenty-one. Any comments? All right. Council Sacco.
I.
Councilor Pratt.
I.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council President Grimes.
I.
And I guess I'll vote I also. Thank you for taking over this, you know, responsibility because now people are going to want to sign parking spots and they're going to have to hit you up about them.
Yes, I take the responsibility.
So the ordinance is adopted unanimously. All right. We had no items removed for consent. Council Communications. I'd like to wish everyone, this is our last meeting of the year. We won't be back till next year. So I'd like to wish everyone happy holidays and a happy new year. I look forward to working with you all next year through all these fun things, boring things, exciting things, sometimes some painful things. We have, you know, some of the tough decisions we have to make, but look forward to working with you all again on this next year. Any other comments? So do I have a motion to adjourn? All right. All those who favor, just raise your hand. All right, well. Get happy holidays, everyone. Be safe. Remember, still wear masks indoors. Keep washing your hands and let's be safe out there. And as I mentioned before, please, if you haven't gotten your vaccination, please do so. And if you need a booster, go to Washington County website. They have all places you can get one. A lot of them are, you can just drop it and get them. It's pretty easy and they're all free. With that, have a great evening, everyone.
Happy holidays.